Councillor Devlin is absent.
I don't think I've found anyone who has passed away, which is good news for to remember someone that served the city in Newport, so I'll move right into the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please go through the roll call for City Council meeting December 11th, 2017. Councillor Rules.
President.
Councillor Agarman.
Here.
Councillor Jinta.
President.
Councillor Tanta.
President.
Councillor Vogel.
President.
Councillor Z.
President.
Councillor Cameron.
Here.
Councillor Connell.
President.
Councillor Cronin.
Present.
That's twice. Councillor Devlin is absent. Councill President O'Brien.
Yep.
Late file items?
Mayor's update as always, you'll see on your desk, there's an emergency preamble for communication 125 and 126, the snow plan 127. On your desk, you'll also see the human rights ordinance, just the formatting, and the parking ordinance, the one that was voted on last time. That's it, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. I don't see all those things.
Yeah, I don't see those things either.
You won't see the two emergency preambles because they are simply, they're not really late files, they haven't been made yet, but I mention them so that there's confusion.
I make a motion to waive the rules and accept the late files, take them up during the year.
All favor?
Aye.
Close?
Want to public comment?
Are you speaking to someone to come in here?
No, we're just gonna pull it out, table it, and then the council can take it out. It needs to vote. It isn't a packet, but it wasn't formatted.
Tainter.
Good evening, Rick Tainter, Ten Dexter Street. I'm not clear of the status of this, I'm here to speak about the complete streets policy that is, has been worked on for a number of months by the Department of Public Services and the Planning and Development Department, and also by the Committees on Planning and Development and Public Utilities. So quite a bit of work has been done over this, on this for the past several months. I think it's a very important policy to adopt, in addition to making the city eligible for additional funding, for improvements of our roads and sidewalks, it just helps to reinforce the city's position in support of complete streets, making streets accessible and convenient for all users regardless of age or ability.
Thank you. Thank you. David Strand.
Councillors, thank you. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce as their chairman, and I am speaking on behalf or in recognition of the off-street parking ordinance changes being requested. I'll try to make this brief, but you know, in a plain sense, the chamber has met, we have met with our Economic Development Committee, which included other business members outside of our executive board, as well as outside of our member, our Board of Directors, and we just feel that this is quite frankly anti-business. Furthermore, I'll add that I think it's just anti-economic development. I'm personally very fortunate to have spent my career as a marketing guy, traveling around Massachusetts and New England, meeting with manufacturers, small retailers, and people that I'm trying to do business with. And time and time again, when I've said I'm from Newport, I often hear, "Well, that's awesome, that's, I love it there, it's so great," and I often will follow up with, "Have you ever considered either opening up a location here, or moving, or moving your business here if you were considering expansion?" And quite often, I must say, the answer is, "Well, no, I heard it's difficult to do business there. There's a permitting process, et cetera, et cetera." I can tell you with personal reference and instinct that we have a reputation of being difficult to do business with. That is our brand identity to business owners who are thinking about moving here. If we institute something like this, I think we'll have a further detriment to that brand identity. Furthermore, I would like to ask, if I can, I'm, I'm holding a copy of this ordinance from September 11th, and I understand there's been an update, can I ask when that update was and when it was distributed? Is this a current dated?
I don't know.
Yeah, it would have been after a joint meeting with the planning board between our committee and the planning board, so that would have been, I think, in mid-November.
So, I mean, I got this from Donna, and I'm not sure why she would have handed me this one if she had a copy of it, but I, furthermore, I would say that we haven't, as a chamber, had any acknowledgement of this, we actually heard it for the first time on Wednesday at our Economic Development Action Committee. So I would kindly ask you to vote no on this, at a minimum, please postpone this vote, this does not have, I mean, no disrespect, we had a quick sidebar to ask a couple of questions, there were many questions seemed to be unanswered about who is and is not impacted by all these things, the numbers haven't worked out. You know, I calculate that if, say, someone wants to walk into Sejwan Taste and open a new restaurant there and add 40 seats or so, if that's divided by four, we're at 10 extra parking spaces at $75,000, which the net difference is $25,000 if it were to be today's number of $5,000. $25,000 for a small business or restaurant is a lot of money. The chance it would equal a website, for instance, which might not actually be invested in this community with myself or another graphic design company that might be interested in doing that work. So I would kindly ask you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Tainter.
Hi, Sheila Tainter, Ten Dexter Street. I'd like to ask you all to support the complete streets policy, so that our cars and cyclists and pedestrians and eventual transit are equally at home there. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Timon.
Good evening, Judy Timon, 39 Lime Street. I'm also here to speak in support of the complete streets policy. I urge all councillors to vote in favor of the policy, I believe it is, it makes a lot of common sense, and it really just enforces the, the idea, the concept, that your street right-of-way, including the traveled right-of-way and your sidewalk shoulders, are open to all users, whether they be vehicles, trucks, cars, buses, bicyclists, pedestrians. And it really is a concept that just, it makes sense, it makes sense for a town like Newport that is walkable. I have had, from the state perspective and from the perspective of municipal employee, I've had experience with it. As a city planner in the city of Lowell, we were the first community to take advantage of passing the complete streets policy and receiving some funding and actually implementing it. So we had a number of projects already on our list to implement complete streets that we were able to fund through the policy. So again, as Rick and Sheila said, there's been a lot of work that you councillors here have, have done on this, and the Planning Office has done, as well as us interested residents, so I urge you to support it and pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, 9 Clapham Street. I just wanted to take a second to say thank you very much to all the councillors for all of your time and effort, all the meetings that you've attended, all the research that you've done. I think sometimes we forget to say thank you, and I didn't want that to happen, especially at this time of year, so thank you to all of you. I do appreciate, and I know that there are others that do the same, and also I wish you all a very happy holiday season and a great new year, and I don't want to exclude all of the city employees, they're very helpful when you have questions about some of the projects that are in front of you, and again, I appreciate it, thanks, have a nice holiday season.
You too. You too, Jane, thank you. Mayor's update.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the council, members in the audience and those watching from home. It is a long update, I will try to be brief. Transportation summits were held on November 28th, Senator Tom McGee, soon to be the mayor of Len, brought all of the Essex County municipal leaders and mayors together to begin talking about the transportation issues that are unique to Essex County. There'll be more work that's happening in that area. On that same week, November 30th, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission held a comprehensive economic development strategy with Secretary of Transportation Stephanie Pollak, who again gave a pretty thorough update on what's been going on in the field of transportation, the commuter rail, MBTA, and we worked on sort of the transportation issues that are impacting economic development in shorter, in smaller teams, and there'll be more work coming with that also. The Rotary and Chamber also hosted a breakfast where we welcomed the new Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development, Rosalina Costa, we're fortunate that she is from the Amesbury area, now she's moved to Quincy, but really has a good understanding of the workforce needs in this area, and it will be a pleasure working with her. Updates on the intermodal facility garage, obviously demolition began last week and the process is proceeding well. NEB has another four weeks to complete the site preparation followed by the demolition, and then the property will be transferred to the city. The Intermodal Advisory Group met on November 30th to provide an update to the butters on the process, and now as this process is going forward, we will be meeting with the IAG group on a very regular basis, on a monthly basis as we go forward. Subcontractor bids are due Wednesday, the 13th, and the general contractor bids are due 12/21. I am pleased to report that we've heard from John Burke, our parking consultant, who has completed his parking study and analysis, and Andy Port and I will schedule a meeting to review those results, and then followed by a meeting with the council and the public to go over his findings and to obtain public comment and feedback. This is one of the reasons why I'm asking that you delay the vote on this off-street parking, I think that all of the work that we do regarding parking should be holistically, and we should look to see what John Burke has, is presenting to us first. And also, there's been a lot of conversation, as you've heard tonight from the Chair of the Chamber, that the Chamber has not had a real opportunity to weigh in on this ordinance and just ask that you carry it over to the next term so that there can be a little additional vetting of this before your vote. Pleased to learn that you are voting on the master plan, this has been a long, long process, and I know this document will guide our city for the next decade and beyond. I am grateful to the many, many hours that many of you on this council put into this project, as well as Andy Port and Kathleen Newell Smith, and many members of our community who participated in creating the master plan. Now with the master plan in, close to approval, the, we will now begin to pull back together the zoning working group to complete revisions to the zoning code. As you know, we've been waiting for the master plan to be completed to move this forward. Andy Port, the Planning Director, will be reaching out to former members of this group, and we also will need new members as we go forward in the new term. Updates on the Brown School, this has been a very challenging process for the adaptive reuse, given all the site constraints, youth services have raised some new issues about their, the space as a result of the three RFPs we received, trying to keep the gym, the playground, concerns about parking, we had three bidders, we brought the team back together again, we've had follow-up meetings with the three bidders, and we're very, we're just not comfortable with where we are in the process, so we're, have the, I'm very pleased the Newport Affordable Housing Trust has stepped up to try and work with us, we need more affordable housing in the city, and we hope to regroup and reissue this RFP by the end of January, and I appreciate councillors and Igerman's support in this process. Tina Los, who is the Prevention Coordinator, who was hired as a result of the three-year tower grant that we received, presented a breakfast last November 1st for community leaders to talk to our new regional partners about the work that we have done in the city with use, using the asset model, and that will be extended to our regional partners, and there'll be additional work coming forward with that. Complete streets, I couldn't agree more with what the comments you've heard tonight, you know that this has been something that my administration has really wanted to move forward, I think it's absolutely critical that we create complete streets in appropriate sections of the city that become safer for cars, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and I would, looking forward to your adoption of this policy, that we can begin to move forward on additional grants and identify priority areas. The Hale Street Ad-Hoc Group, we are waiting for DPS to put together existing conditions of Hale Street, and they've been a little bit busy finishing up the construction season, working on Plum Island, but John Eric White is putting some information together, and I anticipate us meeting with this ad hoc group in mid-January to begin our work, but we need to have existing conditions in place of what we're dealing with on Hale Street before we can move that forward. Merrimack River Beach Alliance, we've had a subcommittee of municipal leaders meeting with our legislators to talk about the potential dredging of the Biscuitica River and the Merrimack River, it's a very, very complicated process, and regarding permitting and multiple permits and funding this, and so there's a lot of details that we're working out, and as more concrete information becomes available, certainly between the Ward One councillor and myself, we will share that information with you. NRA Waterfront Trust in the city, as you know, it was well over a year ago that you charged the city with rewriting the waterfront docks and moving to dissolve the NRA. We had one public meeting, and at that time, it was decided that subgroups of the trust and the NRA would meet to begin rewriting the docks, we used some of your work in terms of the consensus document that you approved in the spring, we have achieved, I would say, really good consensus about where we are, unfortunately, the NRA took a little bit of a turn and began working on a, a letter of interest regarding the properties that will be receiving, the NRA properties, and this seemed to take them in a different direction, so I'm hoping that their joint meeting on Wednesday night, and my conversations with the Chair of Waterfront Trust, that they will get back on track in terms of getting us the final draft of the documents that we need regarding the waterfront trust. We also have a little bit of a jam with two members on the NRA who appointments expire April 1st, I know there is a desire not to extend these appointments, but we might have to do that for a short period of time, just so that they complete their work, there'll be more information coming on that, as a, to you on that, as I meet with members of the trust and the NRA. Last Thursday night, Storm Surge asked us to come and talk about Newport's preparedness in the event of significant weather events. Chief LeClaire was there, who's also our Emergency Management Director, Molly Ettenborough, and Julia Godferson, and John Eric White, and myself, and presented to the public that was there about where we are in terms of emergency preparedness and some of the work we're doing. We have a, I told you about the Great Marsh Study that we were involved in for two years, and as a result of that, really comprehensive work, it will be posted on the website if it hasn't already, it's about 230-something pages, very, very comprehensive document, but it's identified the vulnerabilities in Newport, the next level grant is the Municipal Vulnerabilities Program, and that grant will allow us to begin to prioritize and develop action steps to deal with some of our vulnerabilities. School District, the search processes are both in place for the high school principal, as well as the superintendent, and we are, they're doing a series of focus groups, and the one that I think is relevant for the council and members of the public will be held on this Wednesday night, the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Senior Community Center, where they're looking for input in terms of what are the skills, talents, qualifications that our community is looking for in terms of a new superintendent. The Clipper City Rail Trail, it's hard to say this, but Jordy is leaving on Friday. After 17 years, Jordy Vining has been an exceptional employee, and the work that he has completed over those 17 years in the city will absolutely benefit residents and visitors to our city for many, many years to come. We went over a lot of the details today about what's left with the rail trail, we have very competent consultants and contractors, and things are moving forward with that. A couple of quick things to identify, there's some sculptures that have been installed over by Parker River by Marches Hill, the murals are complete, we hope to have them, Jordy really wanted them installed over by Harrison before he leaves at the end of the week, we shall see if that happens, and we are finally making some progress with the contaminated soil behind the wastewater treatment plant, and it looks like we will not have to cap or have to have an activity and limited use on that site, which is all good news because that's a lot less expensive in terms of the cleanup, and it's about a foot of soil that will have to be remediated, so that's not bad news at all. We also have received draft of the lease for the new easement, not lease, the easement for the butters next to Marches Hill, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward on that fairly quickly, because that had to be redone with the new owners, the new butters next to Marches Hill, where we previously had an easement that was problematic once the house was sold, and that was why we had to build the original trail the way we did, and then the butters have stepped forward and offered to take on a easement, and that is why the rail trail was redesigned, and it looks so much better, very, very, I think everyone's very pleased with the new rail trail. Some of the plantings are coming in, I understand, this week, and so the Maderas is the landscaper, and so we'll have to be working with the butters regarding where those plantings are going. Happy to say Mayor Gray completed his hours of community service last Friday night to honor his bet for losing the Thanksgiving game, we collected scarves, hats, and gloves for veterans, and funds for the Salvation Army, and yes, he did wear a Clipper City hat while he was collecting funds. And finally, to Councillor Cronin and to Councillor Cameron, on behalf of the city, I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to you for your years of service, you have proven to be exceptional councilmen, and have really moved the city forward in so many ways over your years and years of work, as well as your constituent service, you will be missed, and thank you very much for your service. And quickly, a proclamation, whereas the citizens of Newport have come to cherish the restoration of our historic marketplace building known as the Firehouse Center for the Arts, and whereas the arts continue to flourish in Newport as this central location where all art organizations are welcome to gather, and whereas the Firehouse Center for the Arts assumed the reign as stewards of this historic building over the past 26 years, has secured private, local, and state funding in which to undertake a number of ambitious capital improvements to ensure the longevity of this gym in Newport, and whereas the month of December marks the 30th anniversary of the Firehouse Alive Campaign, now therefore, be proclaimed that I, Donna D. Holiday, Mayor hereby, declare today, December 11th, as Firehouse Thrives Day in the city of Newport, and invite all citizens and visitors to celebrate what we all together have accomplished, given under my hand and seal this day, December 11th, Donna D. Holiday, Mayor. And finally, to all of you, I wish you happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy new year, and see you in the next term, inauguration is January 2nd at 10:00 a.m., and I think Richard would like you all here at 9:15, 9:30?
9:15, sounds good.
9:15, sounds great. Thank you. Happy holidays, all.
Move on to the agenda.
Mr. President, may I just ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe Andy can answer. Andy, is this map of the waterfront, is this just for illustrative purposes, or is this the map you guys are working off of now?
That's for illustrative purposes, that is not a final plan per se, that's, that was...
It's not just a, like, here's a map of the waterfront, this is a real thing that people have talked about?
It's one of several different maps that illustrate a common theme, which is expansion of the waterfront park, obviously there's debate over whether exactly those lines might fall for transfer, but that map is just one illustration of that ongoing discussion.
All right, thank you.
Consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for November 27th, 2017, and there are no transfers, communications, or appointments, that is it.
Mr. President, I do think that there's a mistake in the, in the minutes, and I know we will kind of move forward with the confusion in mind, but on the public utilities, I'm quite sure that we did not receive and file complete streets, I know we don't have time to look at the tape, but I just want that noted for the record, because I, you know, whether we act on it tonight or if we push it off to the next council, I still believe it's on, it's still in committee.
Anything else?
Motion to approve. As amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, thank you. Move on to regular agenda, the motion to receiving file, Mayor's update.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Transfers, transfer 49, preamble.
The emergency preamble reads as follows, Section 29B, further defines emergency exist through the fact that the matter referenced in Transfer 49, which is a transfer of monies to address an elevator modernization project, is time-sensitive and should be completed before the session ends, submitted, Councillor Tanta.
I move to waive the rules and with the emergency preamble?
Second.
So we can consider this in one?
Councillor Z.
Well, I'd like to have a discussion, Mr. President, about the nature of the emergency, and perhaps now we could just talk about the issue at hand, so if I may, Mr. Chair, I believe Burgholm is here, excuse me, so I'm trying to get to why this is an emergency and why we need to do it today. If my memory serves correctly, back in April, we had a raft of free cash transfers, and we transferred something like $125,000, I can get the exact figure, towards the elevator, so my first question is, could you update us on, is that, has that money been spent, and what was the outcome of that expenditure that brings us now to where we are today?
Thank you, councillor. The, the amount that was allocated back in the spring was $140,000, and what we've spent of that so far, what we've contracted for in that so far is just for the engineering design, for the work that needs to be done. The original scope of work for this was just to replace the piston and the hydraulic oil tank, but when we contracted with the engineers to come in and do an existing conditions report on the elevator, they found substantially more work that needs to be done, which essentially turns us into a complete refurbishment, replacement of the elevator. So basically, right now, what we spent of that $130,000, it's just $20,000 for the engineering, we still have about $120,000, $118,000, I think, is what's left. So we need to add to that to make up the difference between what they're now estimating for the total replacement and what we've got.
So continuing on that line of thought, explain the timing, so you've got $118,000, why can't we finish the design, have the project settled, go out to bid, and then come back and get the final, final number, then we could then approve, how will approving it tonight make a difference in the timeline?
The, in the report, the, the engineers gave us a timeline of what they expect the project to, to take, they're giving us a total of 27 weeks to complete the design, get through the bidding process, do all of the sharp drawings and approvals, and then order and receive the, the parts for the elevator. That last part, it takes up about half of that timeframe, there's, there's a long lead time to get the, the parts manufactured and delivered, they're looking at 12 to 14 weeks, so if we, you know, if we push this out further, we're gonna be well into the summer before we get through that process, and the, the reason for the emergency request now is to get that started, get that, that clock ticking, so that we can get through that process before summer and do the bulk of this work during the summer when the school is unoccupied.
My last question at the moment, is the consulting or the engineer GGD?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councillor Agarman.
Yeah, so I guess I missed that we already allocated as much as 140 or 150?
140.
140, so, and none of that money's coming back, so when we're all said and done, this is a $300,000 project.
282,000's the total estimate right now. 282,000 is the total estimate right now, yes.
282. But you're asking for 163 today. Am I wrong?
Yes.
That's correct.
So that would be 303.
Plus, okay, yeah, plus the $20,000 that we've already allocated for the engineer. So yes, 300,000 total.
Did we get another estimate from somebody else? I mean, that's $303,000 for one elevator. Did we get another estimate?
Well, this is a budget estimate. You know, it's, this is, once we get the designs done, we'll go out to bid and we will get multiple bids on doing the work.
Anything else? Motion to emergency preamble?
It is, I know Counselor Tanta moved, was there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call?
It's roll call on the motion to waive the rules and a motion to approve the emergency preamble. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is absent. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Transfer 49?
Yes, transfer 49, which is residential school building project, $132,400. Transfer from also NOC Mullen Building Project, $31,002. Transfer to NOC Elevator Modernization Project, $163,710.
Counselor Z, you had a question?
I just wanted to rise and say unfortunately, I won't be voting for this tonight. I don't think frankly that we've met the bar that this was an emergency in the first place. 27 weeks for me is quite a ways out. There's plenty of time and apparently plenty of rope with money to go and do the design and go out to bid and come back with a final number. We've already effectively blown this once by allocating 140 and then coming back for another 160 to make it 300. That's my first concern. Second is unfortunately, we have a history with GGD now. If you'll recall, they're the same engineers that told us we could get 90 cameras for some 342,000. I think we ended up with roughly half that. So I don't see the timing need to do it today. I think there's plenty of time to continue down the path. We meet every two weeks and actually I think we're fairly expeditious in getting things out. So if it takes half the time to make the parts, you come back to us in the spring and be happy to approve based on a more firm number so that we really know what we're getting into. And just I'll close by saying, there's no question about the underlying cause here. An elevator in a school is an important thing. I just think we should do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
One no.
Move on to communications. Communication 24.
Communication 24 is a memo from the retirement board from the executive director, Joe Coniton Parak. It is stating that they're furnishing us with the amount of our annual appropriation for the retirement system for FY 2019, which is in the amount of $4,886,000.
Can you receive and file?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Communication 25.
Communication 125 comes with an emergency preamble submitted by Counselor Vogel. It's, communication 125 is a class-two dealer's license, time-sensitive, and should be completed before the end of the session in order to allow the business to continue uninterrupted after January 1st.
What's the emergency preamble?
I have it. I have it, I'm sorry, Mr. President. The same language we use all the time. And the only part that's different is the part I just mentioned. Emergency exists due to the fact that the matter referenced, communication 125, is a class-two dealer license, time-sensitive, and should be completed in order to allow the business to continue uninterrupted.
Motion to approve the emergency preamble?
Second.
Roll call?
Communication 125, emergency preamble. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron? Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is absent. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Emergency preamble passes.
Motion to approve communication 125.
Communication 125 is the actual application for the license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Good. 126?
Just for point of order, if I may, Mr. President, if I may stand. I just wanted to let the council know that I've had conversation with Plum Auto Works because we went through this last year and they promised us next year to not have a student emergency preamble.
Okay.
Just for the record.
We'll come back and review it next.
Exactly.
126.
126 also comes with an emergency preamble, which is, you don't need it?
So I would like not to have the emergency preamble and refer it to public safety.
So...
Refer it to public safety and carry it forward to the next session.
So that's a motion on communication 126, public safety and carry it forward under Rule 7(c).
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, I think what we can do is refer this to public safety. We'll go to the new public safety and then consider it in one meeting on January 8th. The event is held, is to be held on January 28th. And I think our second meeting in January normally would be the 29th, so we can do it in one meeting on January 8th.
Counselor Z.
Seems like as good a time as any to publicly remind folks that the new events ordinance goes into effect 1118, which will have a, there's a requirement for how long in advance you have to put in the application. So for anybody out there listening, 1118, thank you.
Mr. Manning? Any further discussion? The motion is to refer to public safety and carry it forward?
To the next session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
No.
Two no's.
What do they want to do?
127?
Communication 127 is the snow and ice plan, 2017, 2018. I should mention it is the same as previous years, as far as I know, certainly last year, with the one notable exception that one-half approximately of Green Street would not be available for snow emergency parking. Motion to refer it to public safety and carry it over into the next session.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Cronin?
Yeah, this is, this is, the snow and ice plan is really integral to a lot of the functions of the city. And I think it would be a great opportunity for the new council and new members to really sink their teeth into this and understand when they start getting the phone calls.
Yep. Counsel Cameron?
Thanks, Mr. President. Since the highway department director is here, just a personal comment, I don't know if it's the state or the city or a private owner, but a long story, yeah, from the mobile station to the parking ride, not plowed, gentlemen walking in the street tonight. And I think, I think that whole area, near the cemetery, I mean, really, somebody needs to be doing it. And I don't know if it's us, or the state, or private, but, you know, somebody's going to get hurt.
Very true.
Ward 6, by the way.
Yeah.
So that is a state road. Obviously, it's state, we could put a call into them. They plow very well. They start plowing five hours before the storm and 10 hours after. It'd be nice if they hit the sidewalk too.
Sidewalks are critical there.
I don't think they've ever touched the sidewalk since I've been here. So we could definitely put a call in and express it.
Thanks, Wayne. Thank you.
Thanks to Rick Chakes for pointing it out to us.
Before the storm? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? No. Move on to appointments. The 3,342 of them.
Can I make the motion to waive the second, the reading of the names for the second? I'm still going on our course, but...
I think city collection practice in the home.
By simple math, I think there's 28 of them. I'd be happy to read them, Mr. President, but I'd be happy to listen to the council from Ward 1.
Happier to listen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? No.
Motion to approve collectively on second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Orders?
We need to vote on the approvals, Mr. President?
Comes with an emergency preamble. The order itself is the city council in conjunction with the office of the mayor hereby suspends the collection of parking fees in all parking lots participating in the city's paid parking program between the dates of December 16th and December 24th, 2017. A sign will be hung on the parking kiosk stating free parking. Season's greetings from the citizens of Newburyport. Submitted Counselor Junta.
Emergency preamble, a vote called it?
Correct. Emergency preamble states as it always does. It reads, I'm sorry. This is a vote on the emergency preamble requiring two-thirds. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is still absent. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
That's the emergency preamble.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Yes. Ordinances? Ordinance 12.
Second reading, ordinance 12. This is these so-called off-street parking regulations that you'll see on your desk. It had one motion to amend last time, which was the motion to amend reducing the amount from $15,000 to $7,500. The submitted, you submitted Counselor Agaman and Cameron.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Justice? Counsel Agaman?
We spent a lot of time debating this last time. I don't, I don't think we need to rehash any of that, but I just want to address the letter that came in from the chamber on Friday. This was duly noticed and advertised. There was a newspaper story on the front page of the Daily News in September. There was lots of back and forth. Straddling from one council to another, first to second readings, we think is legally infirm in discussing with the clerk. So I urge you to vote for it tonight and let's end the term. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just to echo what Counselor Agaman said, I mean, we did spend a lot of time on this. This went through various permutations with the planning board. We did agree on the 300 feet. We did reduce the amount. And part of this is really that, you know, we do have a parking problem here. Lord knows, we've argued for years about how to get a few spots off the waterfront. This is just for new uses and they can provide the parking on their own site. That's great. They can have some sort of a shared arrangement, perhaps with a parking lot that's owned, a surface lot that's owned by private, like a bank, which many of those aren't used at night. And I know people have rolled their eyes at me when I've said, you know, they could use these sort of arrangements. And then lastly, paying a portion into this fund, I think, is going to help us when we need to fix spots or if we want to, you know, create more surface lots, that sort of thing. So I think it's all part of sharing in creating that parking resource downtown.
Thank you. Counsel Connell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd like to echo one part of what Counselor Cameron stated, and that was that the radius is 300, not 600 feet. And I know that the draft that was in your packets had a 600-foot radius on it. Let's be clear that the committee voted, as did the planning board, on a 300-foot radius, not 600 feet. And that was based on compelling evidence provided in a map form that showed us exactly the impacts that that might have on nearby neighborhoods. So any reference in here to 600 feet should read 300 feet. Just want members to know that so you're not misled.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in continued support of this as well. And I take a bit of exception to the language used, that this is an anti-business proposition. There's not a tremendous amount of onus put on the business owners or the landlords or anything that's not already in the law now, albeit it has changed, but there's not that huge of a difference. In conversations with business owners, with landlords rather, around town this last week, and I share a couple of landlords in town, I rent from a couple of them, the whole, the whole idea of economic development or being business-friendly, I think falls not only with the city, I think it also falls with the, with the property owners. And there's, there's opportunity here for these property owners to contribute to being a friendly business city in, in the way that they approach their rents and in particular in this case, if they need to provide some help with, with parking or whatever it might be. So it, I take objection to the fact that the city is solely responsible for, for being business-friendly. I think landlords and property owners are as well. I stand in continued support. I've worked really hard over these last couple of weeks. Counselor from Ward 2, you know, I've asked him a lot of questions. I understand it. It's been out there to be understood. And I, and I, and I think it's much, much ado about nothing in terms of it's too quick, it's, it's business unfriendly, et cetera, et cetera. So I stand in support.
Anyone else? Roll call.
It's a roll call on the second reading for ordinance number 12. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
No.
Counsel Devlin is still absent. Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes. Order 15 is a second reading also. It's section 12, 1.5 signage, merchandising, and beautification on public ways. It is submitted by Counselor Z.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Second was, thank you. Second reading, ordinance number 15. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to committee items.
Motion to remove transfer 48.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Can we read what it is, please?
It is a free cash transfer, $47,300. Transfer to tractor purchase, the new capital project, same amount, $47,300. Quote, a large tractor, now in the capital improvement program to be purchased in FY[1745.33] Quote, a large tractor, now in the capital improvement program to be purchased in FY two thousand eighteen. They're purchasing the tractor before the start of winter. Will allow it to be used for snow removal rather than having to contract out the work or rent equipment.
Councilor Tontar?
Budget and Finance Committee voted two-zero to recommend approval of this. Currently, the Parks Department is using a John Deere tractor that was designed for residential use. It's also fairly old and not quite up to the task. It also doesn't, according to testimony from the Parks Department, does not meet state regulations for plowing in the winter in terms of having an enclosed cab. The, this, this piece of equipment is a multi-use tractor. It can be used in the winter for snow removal along the rail trail and in the parks and also in the sidewalks abutting the parks and...
Like Story Ave?
I know it's park-like there, but I don't think...
There's a park for very quiet people across the street.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we said on the heck of Story Ave. What about on Mosy Ave with acts in common? Let's have them do that before, three days after the song, so people can walk.
Right, we, we asked that question and is the intent to do the sidewalk along Atkinson Park.
Thank you.
Both there and also on Plummer, from what I understand. So other uses, in the summary, can be used for grading, spreading, can be used as a forklift. You know, it's a multi-use vehicle. It's being purchased through a state contractor, so it doesn't have to go to bid because it's already been put out to bid. And that price of forty-seven thousand dollars is lower than it would be if you had to buy from a, a private dealer. And that contract with the state where they, where they purchase equipment ends at the end of the year. So if we don't do this now, the likelihood is we will be paying a, a higher cost for it.
Thank you. Councilor Cronin?
Well, I rise in support of this. I just want to add to the list, right under the rail trail on Murray Mac Street, high, high-travel pedestrian area. And the only ownership is really the cities and that really needs to be plowed as part of the rail trail.
Thank you. Councilor Agaman?
I'm going to vote for this. I, I just want to, I, I feel compelled to say something because when the minutes look like this passed and then the elevator passed and it was all the same, but I just want to commend the, the committee and the Parks Commission. They explained their case and I support it and so it's time to vote.
Thank you. I agree a hundred percent. Councilor Zee?
Just one thought. I mean, maybe we could, when we look at the snow and ice plan, we could talk about integrating the parks into here and what their areas are and what their intentions are, so that way it can become kind of a, a regular, public kind of thing and we can identify high-need areas. I have the new rail trail coming into my words. I'm sure there'll be questions, you know, over time, so just a thought.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else?
Motion to remove order sixty-one and carry it forward to the next session under Rule seven-six.
Do we have that now in our packet? No?
It's not in the packet.
That's the forty-one C and a half.
That's the forty-one C and a half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
And that is it from Budget and Finance.
Joinet?
President, thank you. The members of Joinet met with the school community last Monday and we talked about some of their future priorities that may be considered heading into the next full year budget. They're looking to expand their rural language program currently. They have two teachers and they hope to add two more. They also like to continue working on their strategic plan. They're looking to expand STEM at the high schools, the laboratories in the high schools from the last remodel, which was two thousand, two, two thousand and three. So you're looking at labs right now that are fourteen, fifteen years old. They're certainly not state-of-the-art anymore and they're looking to upgrade them. They did want me to mention that, and the mayor mentioned it earlier, but we just want to get it out there twice, if there's any members of the community that are interested in participating in a focus group meeting at the seniors center on December thirteenth, which is Wednesday, from six to eight, our consultant will be there and the, and the community is asked to weigh in on the skills and characteristics that they like to see in our next superintendent. So I hope folks from the community will show up and they will say their piece on what they're looking for. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. License and permits?
Motion to remove communication twenty-one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was brought to license and permits where we voted two-nothing in favor. The only piece that was missing from when it came in last meeting was the, the insurance was not there. As you can see, it certainly is in here now. It was delivered, I believe, just shortly after the meeting last week, so, or last meeting, so. It's all complete and urge you to vote in favor.
Thank you. Councilor Zee?
I'm just curious, on the insurance binder, it says, "City of Newburyport is additional insured for general liability if required by written contract." How do we write a contract? Is this, is this the contract or do we, do we need to write a letter from the clerk that just says you are, you know, this is required, so therefore the binder binds, you know, and gives it, creates the city as a additional insured?
I read that, that it, it was required by them to provide it, I'm sorry. I, I read it that if it was required by them to provide it to their client. I didn't read it the way that you read it.
Oh.
So I don't know the answer to that. Maybe the clerk does.
I don't know either, but I do know that I don't necessarily like it. Now that I look at it, it looks like a condition and I think if you would like, I will ask for them to remove it.
If, if you'd like that as a motion or amendment, I'm happy to.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So the motion is to approve as amended now?
Yes.
So basically, strike if required by written contract, so. City of Newburyport is additional insured for general liability, period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I interpreted it completely different.
Motion as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Neighborhood City Services?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd just like to make a correction in the minutes. Communication forty-eight from Merchants to Downtown. We actually acted on this and it was a, a motion and it was approved by the council to receive and file, so I'd like your records to reflect that. Other than that, we have three items outstanding. Ordinance oh-one, ordinance forty-eight, and communication one-eleven, and I would move that we continue these into the next session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
I'm no. Sorry.
Planning and Development?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to remove communication twenty-four, Newburyport's master plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, if I may, so I'm going to try to make this as uncomplicated as possible, although this makes me feel like I'm a counselor in my first meeting because there's, there's a lot going on here. So this, this was originally submitted quite a while ago. We've drafted a revised order. I mean, this is, this has probably been a three-year process, so in your packet, there is an order that would allow us to adopt this tonight. There've been multiple meetings as a committee, committee of the whole, and with the planning board. We have made several changes recently. You know, and just kind of back up, I mean, there's multiple parts of this, of this master plan. All of it's important as we work towards the future in the city. The biggest and most contentious piece was the land use. There was a point in the spring where we thought to, to kind of punt a little bit and reduce some of the, the controversy around infill if we took items out of a work plan and really, and really didn't have a work plan. And we were going to go that route and we were going to approve it and a citizen who had served as a planning board member in another community pointed out that if we did not have some specifics in terms that were measurable, in terms of the, the action steps, that we would not pass state muster. So they kind of kicked back to committee and the planning board. Obviously, we spent a lot of time on other, other big zoning and, and garage-related activities, but we have made several changes. Councilor Agaman might, might speak to a couple of recent changes that he offered that, that are incorporated in here. So we sent a couple of emails. Again, this is a lot easier to look at online because it's so huge, but we did vote in our committee on, last week, two to zero to recommend approval of this.
Councilor Agaman?
I'll just speak to the last six changes that came in. For the record, these were changes that actually were already approved by the planning board on July nineteenth, twenty seventeen jointly with the Committee on Planning and Development. It's just they typographically or whatever, they didn't make it in. So I think there, and I can speak to the details, but they, they, some of them are pretty minor. For example, there was map H-two was indicating the Back Bay neighborhood. There, there is no Back Bay neighborhood, we just moved it to where it belongs. So I won't belabor that. I'll, I'll say this, I, I started work on the master plan at the beginning. I was on the land use committee. You know, there was a lot of give and take. Some of the things that we supported on that committee, and I supported, didn't make it into the final report and that's, that's fine. You know, it's time to move on. It's a very long document. Believe it or not, some of us really have read every word in it. I'm comfortable with it. I'm going to support it. I want to emphasize again, it's not a legal requirement that the city council approve it, as you know, and our zoning, Massachusetts is strange this way, the zoning is independent of the master plan. There's no legal tie, only a conceptual tie. With that, I'll sit down and urge you to vote yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And not to contradict what my, the previous speaker had to say, but to add another wrinkle to it, and that is that by passing this with city council vote, although it's not a requirement of law, he's correct, what we do is put a, a, a bolder stamp of approval on the plan. And what's the purpose of the plan? The plan is largely to guide things such as development of zoning that's consistent with the master plan and functionally to gain access to certain grant funding that absent the master plan, we would not be eligible to, to apply for. So it's important, I think, for us to act on this as soon as we can, and I think tonight's an appropriate time, having also waited through this, for a number of very pragmatic reasons. You know, it has kind of hand in hand guided some of the discussion of the zoning rewrite that we've been working on, but also, you know, there are grants that perhaps in the next several months, we would like to gain access to and apply for. Absent a vote on this or without as strong a stamp of approval by the city on this, those grants might not be available to us, or at least our applications might not be as strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilor Junta?
I'll say my piece on this. As far as I understand, once the planning board accepted this, it's our master plan. So what, what we're basically doing here is reaffirming it. I, I have some fundamental differences with what I read in there. I, I've, I've met a couple of times to say my piece about, you know, my things, but I understand the reason we need to have it. I understand the grant purposes. I think everybody's put all their time and effort into this. It's, it was quite a hall. I, you know, I wish we weren't voting on it, but I'm just, I am going to, I'm going to vote no on it because I don't agree with everything that's in it. But I think we, I think the ship has already moved off the dock. I'm on the planning board voting on it and so we're already moving forward. But just for me personally, there are some things in it that I'm, I'm not good with, so I think it's just better for me just to vote no.
Thank you. Roll call?
It's a roll call and approval for communication twenty-four, master plan, final document. Councilor Earls?
Yes.
Councilor Agaman?
Yes.
Councilor Junta?
No.
Councilor Tontar?
Yes.
Councilor Vogel?
Yes.
Councilor Zee?
Present.
So noted. Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Cronin?
Politely no.
So noted. Councilor Devlin is politely absent. Council O'Brien?
Didn't show up yet, huh? I vote yes. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President.
I believe the master plan simply needs a majority vote.
Correct.
It passes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna, the next item is ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number eight, and we're going to recommend that that die in this council, which does not need action from us. So this is the zoning amendment around Breedenbeck, Gresham, Nebraska.
So motion to take it out, committee?
I think we just leave it and...
Leave it?
Leave it. And let it die, and it would need to be reintroduced. So multiple meetings about this. I'd be happy to forward to the next Chair of Planning and Development, whoever he or she may be. Much, we got a lot of email comment after our second or third meeting with the planning board. Basically, we, we do want to allow it in owner occupied and we want some licensing and it, there's just a lot that needs to be hashed out. Again, I, I all of a sudden realized over the last few months, why it's taken the state so long to, to deal with this and thankfully I won't be a part of it.
Anything else coming up?
Yes. Ordinance seventeen, motion to carry over to January.
Second.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Just to explain the logic of that and not reintroducing it is that under state law, we had to have, we advertised and have a joint hearing with planning, which we did. So in order to keep that and not have to have Andy Fort do that all over again and spend the money, we just carry it over and we'll have, we'll deal with it next year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Next.
Mr. President, motion to carry over to January, ordinance number eighteen.
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
I'm just going to recuse on this one for the record.
Same rationale, to, to avoid having a vote in this session and then a vote in the next session. We thought to carry it over. We did, you know, the planning board voted to approve this, so the next Planning and Development will need to make a recommendation on it, which they could quickly do in January. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. I'm going to queue next.
Mr. President, motion to remove order number sixty-seven, Special Counsel Waterfront West.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For the record, I'm recusing myself. For the record, so am I.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Planning and Development voted two to zero to approve this on the twentieth, December sixth. And basically, this, this would allow the council to have legal assistance as we deal with Waterfront West. It's, you know, obviously, Planning Department and the mayor are certainly involved, but it's ultimately the council that would need to make zoning changes. And we thought it would be most expeditious for us, or you, I should say, in the next term to have access to legal counsel, and this spells out how we would do that.
Councilor Zee?
Just wanted to, I'm one of the sponsors, so of course I support it, but I, I wanted to ask for your support, a couple of thoughts for you. Number one is, it's important. I can't stress enough, I can only speak for myself, but this is pretty much the only way forward for me on this. I think it's crucial that we have a specialized set of, of tools in the toolbox and that can only come from the right kind of individual or, or group to help us. only come from the right kind of individual or group to help us. And I think hiring a special attorney is going to give me confidence, and I think that's going to hopefully help deliver some confidence to residents that we are adequately and sufficiently, and actually, those are probably not even strong enough, overrepresented, zealously represented in this process. That's number one. So, it's important and it's crucial. Number two is, it's time. I've attended almost every NED public meeting with the Planning Board, and I think they've done a nice job of trying to look at the plans, but they're looking at it from maybe a slightly different perspective than I do. And if you've heard me ask my questions at those meetings, I keep going back to the fact that this is a zoning change, not a project. So, I'm not actually very good at looking at buildings and things like that and windows, but I am good at deals. So, this is something that I think it's time. Those, that process has moved a good way, maybe not all the way, but enough now to understand that we need to know what we're, what the deal is that we're making in order to know what kind of, what we're going to give up, and what we're going to take, and how that whole thing is going to work. And lastly, I just want to say that I don't view this as an idea. This is an actionable resolution. It does ask our city solicitor to help us move forward in hiring this firm or this individual, and I think that would hopefully be done forthwith. And I would posit that it would be the City Council President and the clerk that would help us in coordinating that effort before bringing that person before us. And that's my last comment, which is one of the other reasons I think it's so key, is direct communication. I mean, I would like to speak to this person perhaps regularly until we get through this, and then say goodbye. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further? Roll call.
It's roll call on Order Number 67, Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel has recused himself. Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin has recused himself. And Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, marijuana moratorium. Which is Order 68. We're going to, we're going to let that die. My understanding is it would need to be resubmitted in the next session as an ordinance, not an order. I know, again, this is another area in regulatory and legal flux, which is a great phrase, because the state is still enacting regulations on this, so that would be carried over. And if I can just add, it's not listed here on the committee items, but regarding complete streets, I know we're going to review the tape to make sure that it was not received and filed in the last meeting, and I'm, I'm not always confident in my memory, but I'm quite sure that that wasn't. So, complete streets, I'm going to make a motion to refer to the next, jointly in Public Utilities and Planning and Development, make a motion to carry over to the next session. Yeah. I mean, I don't know what's going on out there, but. So, Mr. President.
Did we act on the marijuana proposal?
Letting it die? No action. Thanks for the clarification.
So, again, Mr. President, I know we talked about this earlier when we reviewed the minutes, and if Andy Port wants to say anything, and I appreciate the people that came earlier to speak in favor of this. So, we've had multiple meetings about this, and what's on your desks now is version five. So, we've incorporated the changes. We were very close. We got some last minute suggestions from Rick Tainter, who's experienced with complete streets, the concept from his time as a planner for the city of Portsmouth, which enacted its own version in New Hampshire. So, we had to have certain criteria to hit a score with the state, so we can then be included in this pool of money. And, you know, I will take some ownership for this kind of lagging through the council. We should have dealt with this earlier, but I think it's where we want it to be, and I think the new council next year can move on this pretty quickly and get us in the, in the running for some of the $400,000 that's given out on a biannual basis by the state.
Do you have the number of that? Is that a communication auto? What was that? Do you remember?
Yeah, if you give me a second to thumb through my stuff. Yeah, that's a good idea. I can look at the minutes from.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
Which is Order 15. Thank you.
If you want the number again? 15. Thank you. Counsel Tanta.
Can I ask why we are not going to consider this tonight?
Because we're in the weeds.
Because, a couple of reasons. I mean, I should have, you know, we had, we had a meeting of those joint committees on November 27th, just before the last City Council meeting. And I think there was an expectation on my part that we were going to bring it out of committee. Again, there was some last minute, and when I say last minute, it's not intentionally last minute, but some new information came to us. So, in that committee meeting on the 27th, we made a bunch of adjustments on the fly. And we agreed, and my notes indicate this, that we would revise it and bring it out on the 11th. I was a little tardy in getting the changes to Andy Port, who was not there that night on the 27th. I did that. I then should have made sure that it was in the packet and everything was hunky dory. I didn't do that, but I still thought it could have been brought out as a late file. And then, in looking at the minutes, you know, the minutes say that we received and filed it coming out of Plan, Public Utilities, and I have no recollection of that at all. So, I think we need to look at the tape, make sure we didn't receive and file it, and then just, and vote on it.
Which will be January 8th, if not too far away.
Correct, yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
It's a motion to refer complete streets, such that it is under Rule 7C, into the next session. Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
No.
Anything else?
No.
Public Utilities.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Order 66, Rockdale Instruction Court.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Justice, Counsel Agaman.
Yes, paperwork is all in order. This is a sewer line contractor, and please approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Approve? Good. Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to remove Order 55, No Parking, 59th Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counsel Z.
Just a brief thing, one of the many joys of Palmyra is the paper streets, and 59th Street ends, and then has a paper portion between the end of this and where it meets up with reservation terrace. It's still, it's still actually fairly heavily used, but for foot traffic, kayak carrying, things like that. And as with most things, if you don't protect it over time, it starts to get smaller, and in fact, in one case, I think there's a building in part of it, but that's another problem for another day. Today is about no parking at the end there, so that the access can be open for folks to use it to get out to the water, as well as if there's ever an emergency need. As far as due diligence on this, I did go out to the neighborhood a few times, I talked to several of the residents. I also worked with the clerk to send out a letter from me to all of the homes on that street, and then right on the corners of the abutting streets. I only received positive feedback, famous last words, but at this point, I think it's been vetted, and hopefully, you will support it. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Roll call.
Roll call on Order Number 55. Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, motion to carry over the MS walk to the next session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes?
No.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, just a point of order. Communication 120. Counselor Z, I think that we voted on that last session.
I thought we did.
Yes, we received and filed it, right?
I think we, it was taken.
No, we referred it to public safety, but.
Oh.
It was informational, so I'm fine, just letting, letting it go. Yeah.
Sorry about that. That's it, then.
Rules Committee?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Order Number 13.
Second. City Council votes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Good.
Motion to approve?
Second.
City Clerk, go ahead.
I should read it. It reads, amending Rule 7E, any committee item relating to bonding funds in the amount of over $250,000 shall not be removed from committee until the greater of 30 calendar days or one regularly scheduled City Council meeting has elapsed since the referral of such item to committee. Jointly submitted, Counselors Zed and Devlin.
Counsel Z.
So, this has actually been in committee for a little while, but basically, the bottom line is pretty simple. I think it's, it's good practice to establish a timeline or an expectation on the speed with which the council can be expected to move forward on a bonding item. So, this sets, I think, a fairly reasonable timeline, so we can't have an in and out on a big bond. I do think we've been in this situation a few times. So, I would ask for your support on this, and I would also remind you that this is a City Council rule, so it is waivable if there really is an extenuating circumstance or difficulty, but we're basically just asking for time. So, if there's a request for a million dollar bond, that it would come in, and that, you know, at least 30 days or one city council meeting, which comes into play in the summertime where we meet less frequently, be allowed to elapse, so that, you know, we don't have to have committee meetings at 7:15 or 7 o'clock on the night of a meeting, or trying to get everything done very quickly. So, again, I think it just creates an expectation. If there's an extenuating circumstance, there's always the option to waive the rules, which we do, and I would ask for your support on it.
City Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. President, I note that Counsel Devlin's not here as a sponsoring counselor.
I'd like to.
Is it your choice to remove him?
Yes. Get rid of him.
The record will note he's being expunged.
And happy holidays to him wherever he is.
Yeah. Yeah, sure is. Counsel Connell.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm not sure how I want to vote on this, but I would, just as a point of inquiry, either the clerk or the council president may have an answer to this. It's my understanding that we had a rule like this at some point in the past, and if that was the case, did it expire? Was it subsequently defeated? Is it still in force? And I don't know the history of it, so perhaps you can shed some light on this.
Counsel Irvin Fowler, who sat there for a number of years, had a rule that was similar to this. I forget the exact language. And after a number of years, because frankly, Bond Council was concerned about always whether it was followed, there was a motion to remove it, and it went away. It was probably, I don't know, six or seven, actually, probably eight years, whenever Irvin was last on the council. Actually, it was probably removed right after he was not on the council. Sorry.
Counsel Connell.
Mr. President, thank you. So, yes, I would ask the sponsor, I believe this is submitted in good faith, but I would also like the comfort of Bond Council opinion on a matter like this, so as we don't complicate or delay the process of approving and bonds and bringing the income in that we need to do major projects. Has there been an inquiry to Bond Council on this matter? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to rise in opposition and vote no. It just seems more bureaucracy to me. I think that there's enough checks and balances in place. I think we, I think that if we do our due diligence and move forward on things in a timely manner, that we can accomplish. This seems to be, to be, you know, tying, unnecessarily tying us up in situations where we need to move a little bit quicker.
Counsel Z.
Well, I'll just respond quickly to the at-large counselor. It is, it is, I believe, if I understand correctly, the clerk's duty to certify that City Council process was followed when a bond is about to be issued, and then he issues his certification letter essentially, which says the council duly followed its process and voted in the affirmative, for example, to support the bond. So, I don't think it's, it's that difficult on this one. And then, to the other at-large counselors, another word for bureaucracy sometimes is process. So, it's a fine line, I understand, and I appreciate that. But, I am open actually to an amendment on the amount, if that would help any counselors, you know, $250,000 is just a number. But, the point here is, big bonds need time, and, you know, we should be allotted that time and create that expectation, so that way, we're not being rushed. And, I mean, I don't need to mince words. This is in reaction to some things that I have had to deal with during my first term, and we all lived that together. So, I, again, I ask for your support. I don't think it's that big of a deal, and if you waive the rules, then the clerk can certify that they were waived if it really comes into play. But, better would be to just follow the rule.
Counsel Cameron.
Yeah, I'll support it. I mean, it is waivable. It's one of our rules, and it would be, you know, I think it's, you know, as a default, it would be good to adhere to this, and if we, if there's some occasion where we don't want to, then we can waive it.
Counsel Tanta.
I'd ask the sponsor, did you discuss this with the finance director?
I have not, no.
I mean, do we have any history on how often this happens? And is this, I mean, I know it happened once, but is it, I mean, is this that burning issue? I mean, we don't, I'd like a little more background on this. That's what I can.
That's what I feel about it.
Counsel Junta.
I am going to rise in support of this. This is all about just timing. If we're going to be basically spending the people's money, we need to make sure there's proper time to evaluate. All of this is, is timing for me. I'm looking at this, and it's basically saying that we need more time to evaluate on this product, sums of money, and everything about it. It seems fine to me, and you always have the ability to waive it if there is a true emergency. It's just to slow you down, I fear, appears to rush into, or be rushed into, I'm having to vote on a bond without proper evaluation time.
Counsel Agaman.
I'm going to support it for the reasons that other proponents have given, but one thing that occurs to me is, I think actually it'll help us not get caught up on bond issues, because remember, every bond vote takes a two-thirds supermajority. So, pretty much every bond vote that we have, we're very careful with. If we were sitting there for 30 days, I think that would calm everything down, actually. So, I think it's actually helpful to put in this rule, and again, we can waive it in an emergency.
Roll call.
It's a motion to approve Order Number 13, Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
No.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
No.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
Majority needed. We need two-thirds to waive it, but to add one, I believe it's a majority. a majority. So I'm going to say motion passes.
Ad hoc Committee on City Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Always good to save a confusing one for the end. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
This has been a committee, correct?
Correct.
You have to take out a committee first.
Motion to remove from the ad hoc committee on immigration services.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you go. Counsel Cameron?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm going to make another motion, but before I do that, I want to just explain. So this committee was created back in April. Obviously, there was a lot of concern, brought to us by citizens who were concerned about federal policies on immigration at that time. We have had several meetings of this group, so the council president appointed myself as chair, and I may miss somebody here. Counselor Igerman, Counselor Earls, and Counselor Vogel. We also had two designees from the Human Rights Commission, Tom Getz and Sean Flaherty. Can't believe I forgot his name. I'm sure he's watching. And also, the marshal was part of it. Counselors Cronin and Connell joined us at several of the meetings. Basically, the tact we took, and we did learn about what the city of Newburyport, and especially the police and the schools, are doing in terms of services for folks regardless of their immigration status. And on the police side, you know, the marshal said that, you know, that immigration status is not something that they ask about as a normal course of duty. If somebody is locked up, and there's, you know, a federal warrant or something like that, you know, they would hold the person in custody, and they might get into federal custody, and that there maybe the feds would look at that. Or we often turn people over to the Essex County Sheriff's Department. Obviously, law enforcement's not my area of expertise, but that generally, you know, we, what we're doing and our police department's policies adhere to mass accreditation standards, and it's just not something that they look into. So what we were looking to do is just, is really kind of formalize that, and what we have before you is basically taking our current ordinance, which was changed in 2015, and that's that first paragraph. So we essentially keep that first paragraph, so that's under the Chapter Two Administration, Article Three, about boards' commissions, and then about the Human Rights Commission. So we would keep that first paragraph. We would add immigration status to the list of various categories there, and then we would add the two sentences, "For other city employees shall not ask for immigration, information about immigration status unless required to do so by federal or state statute." And then, "City department heads should train their staff to comply with city policies." So it does codify it. Sort of the issue here procedurally is that it's an ordinance, and so it does need two votes. So what I'd like to do is, this committee is an ad hoc committee, so I don't believe it would carry over. And I'd like to make a motion to table it. Before I do that, once we have a motion to table, I believe it's non-debatable, so we wouldn't be able to debate it. But if we table it, it could be taken off the table in the next council, and I think could be passed in the, yeah.
No.
No.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think the table dies, like everything else.
How can we carry it over?
Why don't we refer it to another committee, and then 7C?
That's an idea.
That's a good idea.
Refer to another committee and invoke Rule 7C, it will go to the next.
Send it to general government, and then-
General government or cities, Neighborhood and City Services?
Either one.
It's up to you.
Up to you.
About Neighborhood and City Services.
Oh, that one.
Okay. Who will meet more quickly? How about general government? And I'm not doing anything jointly, even though I won't be around. I'm done with that.
Generally, government, makes no difference.
I'll second to general government.
Okay, general government.
And then, and to just-
And to carry over into general.
Now, this is a point of order. I think this needs a sponsor.
Yeah.
Yes, it would.
I'm happy to sponsor it.
So we do it right, or you do it right?
Yeah.
Good point.
Good idea.
Thank you. So the motion was referred to Neighborhood and City Services?
I think the motion is to refer to general government and to invoke Rule 7C, and to add Counsel Vogel as the sponsor.
Just before we vote, and it goes away, I would just like to add, to my impression of this effort, to those of you that weren't watching it, amazingly impressed by what the city already does in regard to this, particularly in the police department. It was fascinating to watch the marshal respond to some pretty serious inquiries about, "How would you handle this?" And he would, it was, immigration wouldn't even come into it. You know, it's not even an issue. And it was amazing and wonderful to watch, that we are, do just what needs to be done, without getting involved in all of the higher-up politics that are going on in our country. So that was great to hear. And same thing on the city side, in the human resources department, we are doing the right thing. And it was great to experience that, and I'd like to thank everybody's efforts involved in that.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Counsel Tanta?
So my understanding is ICE makes requests that certain individuals, let's say someone working in Newburyport or living here, gets stopped for a parking violation, is held by the police. And ICE finds out about it, who knows how, and requests that the individual be held until such time that they can be picked up. And that's happening all over the country right now. Was that question posed to the marshal?
Yeah.
And how would they respond?
And I'll defer to Counsel Cronin.
This is from low 34 years of experience, and Supreme Court decision that just came down. There's two prongs here, okay? First off, immigration status is not being checked by our local police department. Now, if somebody has run out, all right, for warrants and whatnot, if they have a criminal warrant, either state or feds, they're going to be held. They're going to be held until they get before the proper judge or magistrate. The Supreme Court has, Massachusetts Supreme Court has ruled that immigration detainers aren't part of it. So what happens is, an arrestee is taken into custody by the police, he's booked. He's either released on bail, or a bail fee, or he's brought directly to the lockup, and now it's Essex County's issue, or he's brought to a courthouse where he's arraigned. Now, the judge in Essex County can do whatever they want. It has nothing to do with us. The only time that our law enfor, our local law enforcement does anything with immigration is if there is an active criminal warrant from the feds, for an immigration-related reason, or for any other reason. But it's a valid criminal warrant, not a detainer.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Counsel Vogel?
Just to clarify, it's perfect, but just the other way around. ICE calls and says, "Hey, pick up this guy," we say, "No." Essentially, is what happens. Unless it's a criminal warrant.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos?
No.
No.
Anything else? I probably guessed some. I got the answer. Go to the audit. Counsel Zied?
I just have a few things. I'll try and go as quick as I can. So the mayor mentioned Plum Island briefly, but I thought, as the ward counselor, it makes sense for me to talk really briefly about it. So the Army Corps of Engineers is the primary lead on dredging projects, and they're in the midst of either working on or contemplating two major dred projects. One is the Piscataqua, and the other one's the Merrimack. Don't ask them if they are or not, because they will neither conform nor deny what they're doing, but those are the two that they're thinking of. And so, basically, the way the Army Corps of Engineers works, to keep it short, is if you leave them to their own devices, they dredge and they dump the sand where they want to. That's the default option, and unless anybody says anything, that's what they do. They do, however, offer municipalities or state governments the option to put the sand in different places, provided that this municipality, or the state, or the city, or the consortium will pay towards some of the difference in costs. So basically, that's where the rub comes in. And I don't want anybody to be blindsided, since there's, all of us are here, and the two council elects are here. So I don't know what's coming. I don't have any dollar figures. I have nothing to offer in terms of scope or anything like that. I don't even know if that will be the direction that the MRBA, which is Salisbury, basically Salisbury, Newbury, Newburyport, will even decide to go. But in the interest of keeping everybody abreast of what's happening early rather than later, I just wanted you to be aware of that. If you have any questions or you want to take a walk down there, I'd be happy to show you. Northern Reservation Terrace continues to be our hotspot. Newbury has one hotspot. Salisbury has one hotspot, so we're equal in that respect. So that was my first comment. Second one is on the Brown School. I just, I wanted to say that I conferred as well with the Ward Two Counselor and spoke on the mayor, and I think we have some work to do on the council, I think. As folks know, the building was surplus from the school department. It was never really picked up by the city council. There are outstanding questions that we need to work with the community to answer before another RFP goes out, so that the time is spent, in my opinion, in a positive way. Unfortunately, the last one didn't quite work out that way. So I just wanted to throw that out there to the residents of mine, who are on the abutting. If they have any questions or comments for me, or want to start directing comments to me, I would welcome them. And I'm hoping that the Ward Two Counselor, and perhaps the mayor and I, will call a meeting, or somebody will call a meeting, and get everybody back in that room, and recalculate here, and get back to it. So that was my second thing. Third one is, I just wanted to stand up and thank Counselors Cronin and Cameron as well. I've learned a lot from both, and the, it's hard to say goodbye, but I appreciate both of their efforts, and I thought I wanted to say that personally. And then to everybody else, very happy holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel Connell, anything?
Sure. Thank you. I was actually going to write something down, and I was going to bring a binder, but my binder is empty.[1208.23][1208.23](Laughter) Obviously, I see other people have binders. I feel left out. But no, I want to thank, in a particular order, my experiences of the last almost eight years here in Newburyport. First off, to my family, who are not here.[1230.94][1230.94](Laughter) But, you know, the family has lived Newburyport politics for eight years, and more intensely in the last maybe eight or nine months. So with that being said, thanks to them. And again, in no particular order, all the counselors that are here, all the counselors I've served with over the years, from Ward's One to Ward's Seven, you know, we just, you know, I've learned so much from so many people. Counsel President O'Brien, who has been president for my tenure, and just, I want to thank you for your guidance and your help. Rich Jones is the clerk for my tenure. I want to certainly thank him. And department heads and employees in the city, and they put it on the line, you know, pretty much all the time for the citizens. So thanks to everybody, and I'm trying to keep names to a minimum here, because I don't want to forget anybody. To the people of the city of Newburyport, all of the city of Newburyport, thank you very much. It's been a great experience, and especially to the residents of Ward Three, that I've had the privilege and honor to serve. They probably are number two on the list, being my family being first, but I just want to thank them as well. And finally, I just want to thank Mayor Holiday for her service for eight years. And, you know, it kind of does take a village to make a community. So with that being said, I'll just end there. And as General MacArthur once said, you know, "Old soldiers never die, they just fade away." But of course, he also said, "I shall return."[1360.01][1360.01](Laughter)
Next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually did something I never do. I actually wrote out what I was going to say, and I couldn't find a binder, but I have used them. Counsel Cronin is very organized, and that's something I've learned from him. And in true fashion of the way I've done my city council and my work in personal life, I was typing this at work at about 5:15, trying to get out in time to get to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. So it's the last thing that the last council meeting of this term needs to hear, is advice, but I'm going to give you some advice. And in the immortal words shared by many counselors over the years, including Counselors Connell and Zied, "I'll be brief."[1429.23][1429.23](Laughter) In fact, Sharif said it in his "Go to the Order." He said, "I'll be brief." So here's a couple of things, and this would apply to the new counselors as well. And I think it really starts with not taking yourself so seriously. You're not the first person elected to the Newburyport City Council, and you're not going to be the last. Hardly anybody runs, so it's, you know, you can come to your own conclusions on that. It's an elected group, a select group that wants to run. One thing I've learned, it's a lot easier to be opposed to something than it is to be in favor of something. But being opposed doesn't get you anywhere, so you got to keep sticking to it and get to someplace positive. Don't overestimate the dangers of doing or not doing something. Sometimes, I think, on small things, we might overestimate the dangers, and sometimes we underestimate our ability to come together and get something done. There've been many times when I thought, "There's no way we're ever going to agree," and we do eventually come together when it's something good. To the voters, and there's many of them here, pretty much all my favorites, there's probably a few watching on TV, you know, let your elected officials know what you think. If you don't get back, if you don't hear back from us or from them in a couple of weeks, try it again. They're very busy. As elected officials, we're all very busy. We have different communication styles. Some of us don't use email or Facebook Messenger, but we all want you to know that we care about what you say. And I've gotten back to a lot of people in the years, and I know Counsel Cronin might share this as well. We've connected with a lot of constituents, but there's a percentage we didn't get back to, and they're still pissed off at us. But we do the best that we can. Also, to the voters and citizens, please subscribe to the Daily News. We have the Daily News here. We need to keep that paper alive. Get the paper version. Don't get the electronic version. It's always on my doorstep at 5:00 in the morning. But we need to keep that. Without that, we don't really know, we're flying blind, and we don't really know what's going on. And yeah, everything in it isn't always what you want, but it's really important. And also, to elected officials and voters together, don't believe everything that you read on Facebook.
Or on the news.
If everything on Facebook were true, my shoe would be covered in dog poop. I'd be driving a green Subaru, and if you watch Newburyport comments, you know what I'm talking about. And also, a coyote would now burst into the city council chambers, because these are common themes on Facebook about Newburyport. And I won't even get into what's going into the Kmart space. So I stepped down for a couple of reasons. 10 years is a long time, but I need to focus on my day job, as many of you know, and also see my family more, who, my wife also is not here tonight, was thinking about coming, but I know they watch on TV and give me feedback when I get back. So I've served two years as Ward Four Counselor and three terms at large. They're both challenging, and they're both a little different. I want to thank Irford Fowler. When I ran in 2007, Irford had been the Ward Four Counselor for, I think, 14 years. I didn't run in opposition to him. I ran because there were issues that I was concerned about. Irford and I connected towards the end of the campaign, and a couple of weeks after the election, which I won, you know, and it was fairly close, you know, he gave me a tour around Ward Four, and still to this day, I know the places where Irford told me to watch, you know, "Keep an eye out on that person. Watch that street. Watch that sidewalk. This person doesn't like me." And those are the same people that don't like me now, but that was good advice, and I really appreciated his collegiality. So I've worked with two exceptional mayors, Mayor Moke and Donna Holiday, two very capable council presidents, James Shanley and Tom O'Brien, and I thank them for their leadership, and really with a bunch of counselors. And I don't think I'm forgetting anybody, but this is alphabetical. Connell, Cronin, Deraven, Devlin, who is not here tonight, he's still absent. Earls, twice, he came back, you shall return, and you did return. Igerman, Junta, and one of my major accomplishments is being able to spell Larry's last name without looking it up. Hartquist, Herzog, Hutchison, twice, he came back too. Tom Jones, who sat in Counsel Igerman's seat and was the one on many 10-to-1 votes, but he really brought a great perspective to the council. Megan Kinsey, who sang and sat next to me here, where Counsel Zied sits. Larry McCavitt, for one term, who I think sat where Bob sits. Kathleen O'Connor-Ives, who went on to do something else. I think we've heard, to hear from her pretty often. She sat next to me as well. Dick Sullivan, who I think sat where Barry is sitting. Charlie Tanta, who is right there. And Vogel. And lastly, Zied. It's good to have Zied there, and I want to thank all of you for your service. Mr. Clerk, thank you for your support and the staff's support. Thank you for this bow tie, which I'm wearing tonight, and I'll be able to accept this officially and ethically in January, because this is a $300 bow tie. No, it's, but thank you for everything that you've done. You make us all look good, and how you make all of this happen is really, really pretty amazing. And as Counsel Cronin said, just the city staff, they're the- And as Counsel Cronin said, just the city staff, um, they're the, they're the folks that are teaching our kids, they're fixing our roads, they're putting out fires and firefight. Thankfully, we don't have too many of those, and they take care of our seniors. The staff, uh, many of whom are here tonight, um, they're at our meetings all the time. We grill them, we put them, uh, through another version of hell in addition to their own jobs, but, cause that's our job. But they, they really do terrific work. Everybody on the school committee and all the boards. Again, you, you don't know that unless you're here. I feel really good about the state of Newburyport, uh, and, and the state and status of Newburyport, because I've seen it from the inside, so, uh... You know, wanna just thank all of you for what you've done, and I definitely wanna thank, uh, finally, my wife and daughters for their understanding of the many hours that, that go into this. Uh, about eight years ago, I was driving around with my, uh, older daughter, Anna. She was probably six at the time. We hit a pothole, and she said, I wasn't reaching for my cellphone to make a phone call. She said, Daddy, aren't you gonna call that in? And I said, Anna, yeah, I would, except we're in Salisbury. So my kids got dragged to a lot of meetings when they were younger, and finally, uh, at a planning board meeting about six years ago, Lucy looked up at me and said, Daddy, this is not fun, 'cause I promised it would be fun. So, I wanna thank them, you know, for, you know, it's really a family effort, and, and they're, they're the ones who have supported me to do this. So, um, you know, I hope we'll continue to cross paths in the years to come, and thank you for everything that you've done for me.
Maybe else?
Yeah, you do it.
Don't. Go ahead.
I'll be very brief. I know the game is on.
They're losing, so don't worry about it.
On behalf of the clerk's office, and, and behalf of myself, you two have been exceptional to work for. I have started with the City of Newburyport, living in, uh, ninth, January nineteen seventy-eight, so I've seen a lot. I left and came back, but I still have seen a lot. And I was amazed then, in the eighties, and I'm amazed now at the amount of time and effort and sacrifice anyone who runs for office does, or sits on the zoning board, or planning board, et cetera. I really, really am amazed, and I thank you for that. Go ahead.
I'd say for believe that, you know, I've, I've worked with both of you, and it's been a, been an honor and a privilege to serve with both, with you both, because you've helped me, you know. I've been here for a few years, but I learn something every day from you people. And the planning board, which is my, planning is my weakness. I'll, I'll miss that, and all the zoning laws and everything, but, Ed, you've helped me in that, and public safety rules and, and everything. And Counsel Cronin, I mean, it's been a great learning experience for me for the last eight to ten years with you guys, and damn it, I'll miss you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good motion, Mr. Gurn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Happy New Year. How much it gonna cost?
Took my...
Hope you come back. Good, I hope so.
We can both get emotional the older we get, couldn't we?
I don't know.
Yep, it can be the same. This is it for me.
You don't think they're gonna leave?
We gotta hold off till January. I guess my predecessor, um, yeah, we've, we've got a million things going on, but we, we're, my predecessor...
Yeah, I answered a question more about the map. So is this, is this something that you guys have liked? Yeah, this is looking...
What are you referring to earlier? So that map was actually, I don't know why...
We're definitely gonna do it, uh, my, uh, communication. No, no, we're gonna reach out to them.
That map was created, um, conceptually by me. Way back, I don't know, quite some time back, I have to check exactly where. There's been very different versions of it. That one was created, um, to illustrate at a time what I had in my head, myself and the mayors.
Tanta, Vogel, number nine?
Tanta, eight.
The clerk, number six.
Zied, number four.